We will call the Tuesday, July 2nd Planning Commission meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Townsend. Here next to the ladies from here. Yep.
All right, we are ready to call the roll.
Mr. Townsend.
Here.
Mr. Poole.
Here.
Ms. Woodard.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Hollinsworth.
Here.
Ms. Mason.
Here.
Mr. Gregg.
Here.
Mr. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Boyd.
Here.
Seven members present.
Okay, is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the June 6th?
Nine, I'm sorry. They're all here. You guys surprised me today. Thank you, Jesus.
I know that the minutes here approved is read.
Was that a motion for approval? Was there a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They will stand approved. Under due business, item number one is 20th Avenue, two lot subdivision. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
Some.
For discussion.
Okay, I'll take one of those as a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, what have we got here, Dave?
Okay, we're doing a little different. We actually have some technology now. Gina and Kimberly worked on this presentation. So, our first item for business is a two lot subdivision on 20th Avenue West. This is a parcel that the city has sold to the highest bidder to satisfy outstanding tax debt. This parcel, as you can see, there's... this is the typical driveway detail because it's a small parcel, small frontage parcel, it's not going to be able to meet the municipal code. So, per the code, they're showing you what they're going to do and you will approve their driveway detail when you approve this final plat. It's two lots. One of the lots has an existing sewer tap. The other lot does not, and it will not get a sewer tap until that basin is updated and upgraded within the administrative order of consent that the EPA has on the wastewater department for sanitary sewer overflows. It's in the next phase, but at the present time, we can add no more taps. We can only use taps that exist. So, one of these lots has a tap, one of them doesn't. So, we will issue a building permit for one. And this is the plat overall. Any questions I can help you with?
So, we're selling two lots and they're going to build on one?
At the present time, due to the administrative order of consent with... from the EPA.
I mean, correct, they sold one lot.
They sold one parcel.
Yeah, one parcel. That's what the city sold. And because of the zoning, which is 7,000 minimum, they were able to cut it into two lots, which is over 12,000 square feet.
So, in this particular... in this particular basin, wastewater basin, they have not been able to address the sanitary sewer overflows within the administrative order of consent to do so. It is scheduled to be done in the next phase of construction. Right now, as you well know, we're building the two wastewater tanks, new interceptor, and so when that phase is through, this is the next phase, there's going to be, to my knowledge, new... there's going to be some new construction, there's going to be a new lift station, there's going to be some new lining in existing sewer lines. But the purchaser understands that the capacity is not there, but will be there, and they will be able to buy a tap and get a building permit in the future.
When will it be there?
I'm thinking... I don't know. I'm hoping in the next two years.
When do we just spend $60 million on?
We haven't spent the whole $60 million yet.
We ain't far from it. So, we can't have a tap on this piece of property because we're waiting for two big tanks to be built?
No, the tanks are not even going to address this issue. In this particular basin, the tanks aren't even going to address the issue. There's going to have to be new line and a new lift station. Mr. Beers is much... would be much better informed on how to address that question, but at the present time, there is not capacity to add any more sewer, per the EPA administrative order of consent.
I understand, I just don't... I don't want somebody to get held up. I want to build on another lot because we can't get one tap for one house.
Right.
That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I mean, if we're going to hold them up, they understand, I guess that's fine, but let's don't hold them up forever.
We're not. As soon as the tap is available, they will be notified and they can purchase their tap and get a building permit, pay all associated fees to the city and to the county.
And I'm sure all that was explained to them before they signed the dotted line.
Yes, ma'am. They were notified by the wastewater department.
And I even talked to them before we... I told... when I told them we had to bring this to the planning commission, I told them that again, that they only had one tap.
One lot.
And this was a property that was sold by the city because of tax implications?
Yes, ma'am. Non-payment of taxes. So, we went through that iteration of bid, rebid, bid, rebid, bid, rebid, and then finally got to a point where nobody would pay any more money.
This is a lot of record?
They will be.
The current one is.
Yes.
Before it's replanted, it's a lot of record. I mean, he could go in there and build one house right now because he's got that existing tap because it is a lot of record. But wanting to do two houses and have two lots, it has to be replanted.
And showing this detail for the driveway. The lots, once again, do not meet the size requirement that would allow this...
Regulation.
Yeah, the municipal code regulations for driveways to be made. But there is a provision within that code to allow the planning commission to approve this type of driveway.
So, is the driveway the issue or is it the tap the issue?
The tap is the issue. There's only one tap for the two lots.
Right.
So, they will only be able to build on one lot until the future when the new... when that basin is repaired and meets the administrative board of consent's requirements, at which point there will be a second sewer tap available.
What did you say, the time limit on possibly getting that other tap?
I do not know. If I were to say, it would be pure speculation on my part. Mr. Beers would be veteran formed to answer that question, who is the director of the water and wastewater department.
All right, are there any other questions? Discussion? Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second, we're ready to vote, Gina.
Ms. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Townsend.
Yeah.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Ms. Woodard.
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth.
Yes.
Ms. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
All right, item number two is the terraces at Legacy Town Homes preliminary plat. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, what have we got here, Dave?
We have a preliminary plat for the terraces at Legacy Town Homes. It's on Oakland Road. This is 11 and a half acres that is within the legacy planned unit development. And so, the developer, Mr. Blackman, has proposed 52 townhouse style units. And so, y'all are now familiar with where it's at. This is the plat itself, what they're going to do, and if... is they're going to... because these are attached units, they're four living units or three living units. Each of the smaller units will have their own small parcel of land that will be transferred, and then there will be a bigger common area that the public element that will be maintained by a homeowners association. And so, there's 52 units, five of them, six of them front on Oakland, but the attached areas are turnaround areas so that the people will not back out on Oakland Road. They have a back... they have... they pull out their garages, back into this little back end area, and then head out and they'll pull out on the Oakland Road.
This is a cul-de-sac. There's three inches.
This is what the units will look like. This is Mr. Matt... this is the developer's rendering. This is... these are the... this is the fronts. Some of these will be two stories, some of them will be one story. This is a side view, rear view. This is just a 3D overview up here, and then these are the four different... four plan options that they're going to make available to the purchaser.
So, these will each be individually owned?
Yes. They'll sell the unit and this little piece of land. So, there's four lots right here, and a four unit building will sit, and the body walls of each unit will sit on top of these interior lot lines. And if I'm not saying that correctly, our registered... our local registered land surveyor, Mr. Arts, would be glad to expound upon that. Come on.
No, you're fine. You explain that. One thing I wanted to touch base on, back on the master plan for the legacy originally, this was... this was set up to be like apartments instead of townhouses. So, and I forget the number of units.
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty something apartments was going to go on this piece of property. So, in my mind, what we're proposing here is a little bit better scenario for this area and truly a little cleaner than just rental property out there. If y'all have any further questions, feel free to ask me.
Does the homeowners association take care of all of the green or just the common?
Yeah, I asked the same question because if... like, if each individual owner has a little yard in front, then how's that going... you know, how's that going to be maintained? But essentially, all the green area will be under the same homeowners association where it's all mowed and maintained at the same time. It's just the housing equipment, put some fires up against the house for their unit, then they'll have that right.
Does it go down beside four or beside one?
The T-box, the T-box for one... no, I'm sorry, the green for one is right here, Mike.
Okay.
Then there's the T-box for two, and then four's green is going to be right in that area.
Yeah, it comes down to twenty-four and one.
So, like, so, Mr. Blackman got, like I said, these units, this is what they're proposing? There are four different options. There's a single... there's two single story options and two two-story options. If you have any questions for Mr. Blackman, he's right here and he'd be glad to answer them, I'm sure, as long as y'all approve this preliminary plat. But this is just preliminary plat approval. We are still working on bonding. The final plat should come to you guys next month, in August, for final approval, and we'll move forward from there. We're just about got all the details, I think, worked out, or may have already got all the details worked out on the construction plans. So, it's... at this point, it's a... do y'all would like to see 52 townhome style units be sold in Springfield?
So, I'm assuming that the projection time on this would be just as soon as they can get everything approved? Is this... do we have a timeline on this?
That's what I'm assuming, Mr. Blackman.
Yeah, would they sell?
I mean, you know, they...
Would they re...
Yeah. The... as you know, it's... is a subdivision, so they will have to do certain things before they can even get building permits. So, they'll have to get their sanitary sewer in, their water in, they'll have to get in it at a minimum based stone, and it'll have to be tested, and at which point, we can then begin allowing them to get building permits if they bond for the rest of the infrastructure. Some developers, and I don't know... I've never dealt with Mr. Blackman, but it's... there are some developers that put all the infrastructure in before they sell the first or try to build the first build. This is not a typical subdivision by any means. You know, they got to build four of them at a time. So, it's... you know, it's unique to Springfield. It's not something that we've not seen before. You know, Ginger Hills is similar. We're working with Michael Hunzucker and his group to do the detached version of this at Village Greens that y'all have approved the preliminary on. So, you know, you're seeing interest in our town with some nice price point units.
What is the price point?
What's the price point, Mike?
I think the one story will be two seventies, two eighties, somewhere in there. The two story will be a little bit more expensive because it'll be closer to 3,000 square feet, where the one story will be 1,200 to 1,400 square feet. Be in the probably low threes with the two story, maybe higher twos with the one story.
All right, any other questions?
Did I hear you say the original plan was to do like 250 apartment units?
Well, let me say that was the discussion. It was the planned unit development in, I want to say, 2007 or '08 was negotiated to have multi-residential on this 11 and a half acres up to 256 units.
So, if we do the townhomes, how many units will be on the... how many will we have?
They will only have 52.
Fifty-two.
And they... and they will not be rental units, they're all sale units.
Yeah. I like it. I think it's an upgrade for that area now. I like it.
Once you get started, I mean, you're going to build four at a time, but once you get started, your infrastructure, are you going to have a timeframe to move to the next four or the next four and not spread it out for 10 years?
We sell them, yeah. We'll start the next one. We sell one of the four, maybe we start another one. We sell two of the four, maybe that'd be the one. Are we starting another one?
I hope that they'll be in and out within two years' period of time, Mr. Hollinsworth.
I mean, I understand, you know, everybody wants to be... do that. I don't want to end up like the old country club.
Right.
Sew it off two or three times and...
Well, but it's moving along right now, so it's...
I know it is right now.
Mm-hmm. So, you know, there's a lot of people looking at Springfield and...
Oh, it looks good. I mean, we need that.
And they're realizing there's a market here and, you know, they're willing to make these investments. And we're thankful to have them make these investments.
All right, anything else? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we're ready to vote, Gina.
Ms. Woodard.
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth.
Yes.
Ms. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Ms. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three is at Martin Rea Warehouse, 60,450 square feet site plan. Did I pronounce that right, Dave?
You did. You did.
All right, I didn't know for sure.
But it is at least a round number.
Well, I assume we're looking at it because it's over 50,000.
You are correct.
Right.
Motion to discuss?
We do need a motion to put it on the floor for discussion.
Moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're ready.
Martin Rea has submitted to us two different warehouses, both of them slightly over 30,000 square feet. So, it's... I'm going to... I've got a new opinion and philosophy. If I know it's going to be two phases and it's going to be over 50,000 square feet total, you're going to bring both phases to you guys. You need to see what we're doing. This one right up here, I wouldn't use my laser, but the screen needs it. This is the one they're building now. It's going to... it's going to house new dyes for the ware... for the facility. The second phase will be built sometime in the next year, and this parking lot will be built in conjunction with this in phase right here, given the parking that they need to actually have. Now, we're still wrapping up some questions about construction and storm drainage, calculations like that, but once we get that together, we will go ahead and approve this to be... to be above board. We did issue foundations and building on this particular one because they were pressed to have those dyes on plate and get those dyes as soon as they could and get stored and not lose... have any downtime and not have to lay anybody off. So, we thought it was in the best interest of Springfield and those workers to work with them to try to ensure that that didn't happen.
And the weather delay too.
And yes, and the weather delay some as well.
Okay, any questions, discussion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we're ready to vote.
Who's second?
Buzzing.
Buzzing. Thank you. Ms. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Townsend.
Yeah.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth.
Yes.
Ms. Mason.
Yes.
Ms. Woodard.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
All right, item number four is a resoning request from Robert Everest from CG to CC. And this is a discussion only, we're not going to...
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Is second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's talk about it.
This is... this is the proposed area. What precipitated this is Mr. Everest has a client who has remodeled a house on that park. This area is zoned presently commercial general. So, that house is a non-conforming use, non-residential, is not allowed in CG, commercial general. So, the lending institution contacted Gina, and the lending institution wanted a letter assuring them that in the event the structure burnt down, that they would be able to rebuild that house. We could not give that letter. So, Rob... Robert came and sat down and talked with us to try to figure out what would be the best course of action to try to get it to where that letter can be given. So, we discussed many options, and this is the best one that we could come up with is there are 32 parcels within this blue boundary. The majority of them are zoned CG. There are two and a portion of one that is zoned CS, and that other portion of the other one that we were just talking about is zoned R7. So, the way we decided to move forward with this is that... and we didn't settle on this boundary until after Rob had gotten out, he met with owners, he talked with property owners, he had 14 different property owners sign that are within this boundary, a petition to... to rezonate this from CG to CC core commercial. The core commercial zoning will allow residential in this area. So, every one of these houses up through G of here are non-conforming. If any of them burned down, they can't be rebuilt at the present time. However, in the CC zoning, they can be. This will also allow us this 12th Avenue area where we have these warehouses, and this vacant lot, this is that lot that's on CS and R7, because at one time, it was two different parcels, and then those parcels were combined into one bigger parcel. So, this area right here has the potential, once CG... I mean, once it goes from CG to CC, to be sold and to have multi-use or multi-residential there. And it speculate... you know, at this point, it's pure speculation on our part what would... could go there, but, you know, apartments up to 70 feet, condominiums up to 70 feet, mixed use storefronts with residential on the top. You know, we're only limited by the imagination of whoever purchases that and whoever their architect is.
Is the fire department capable of handling the 70-foot height now?
That's why it's set at 70 foot.
Okay.
You know, if anybody wants to build bigger, we'll let them buy the fire department a longer ladder truck.
More homes.
Yeah.
But presently, our 100-foot ladder truck will, you know, pull up, and 70 feet is the maximum height that if they can swing over and fight the fire.
So, David, what you're saying, if I'm reading you right, is this is probably going to start a move of people wanting to change from CG to CC?
Could possibly. We know that this... this is the infamous Second Amendment. There's a guy waiting to buy, has a contract as soon as they want to close, they're going to come to us and ask for CC zoning. That property formerly disbarred, same thing. This is that warehouse, restaurant warehouse sales, but we know that this one and possibly that one are going to... they're going to come anyway, as soon as they can get the contract done on the Second Amendment.
So, where are we with this? It's apparent that he's done his work. He's talked to all the neighbors, they've signed a petition.
Yes, ma'am.
So, where are we?
Well, we're having a discussion because this... you know, these types of decisions shouldn't be made at the staff level, these types of decisions should be made at the planning commission. These types of decisions should be made at the planning commission level. So, what staff wants to hear one way or another from you as a planning commission? Would you like to entertain and move forward with this rezoning? In our plan, and you know, we... we're hoping for the best, we've got letters that... We haven't printed them all, but we have a database set up, a letter that will go out to eighty-one people, thirty-three of them. We're gonna notify everybody that's inside that blue line. We're gonna notify everybody that is touching that blue line or close to that blue line and will be notified you're adjacent to the area that we're thinking about rezoning or you're in the area or you're near the area. And we're gonna discuss with the possibility to take action to approve rezoning at the planning commission meeting of August first. And so, everybody, you know, so we're gonna invite them to come and give us their input.
Also rezoning signs will be put up on probably about three different areas. I think we've got three or four rezoning signs. We'll put them in where everybody can see them.
Is that from Cheatham Street to Main Street?
Cheatham Street to Main Street. Cheatham Street to Main Street. Ninth Avenue, here's 12th Avenue. This is piece property owned by Steve Wells.
Who?
Steve. This is property owned by Drew Sloan where that...
The Triang and Best Boulevard.
That there's a mercantile, white building looking and going in there. And of course, she... they're interested in getting rezoned to R, to CC because of a less stringent parking requirement.
Across the street, old milk plant from Drew's. Anything been done on that?
We're wiping out the corner.
There you go.
The houses that you talked about that were in there, are they all zoned residential or CG?
They're all zoned CG. All of this red is CG. This blue is CS and this little piece of lavender is R7. This... this is the old practice building. It was rezoned from CG to CS several years ago to allow for the church that is there now to be put in there because at that time, churches were not a conditional use within a CG classification. We have changed that. This planning commission and the board have changed that so we don't have to change commercial zoning's anymore to allow for churches.
If this goes through the church that's there on the corner of Cheatham and Central and then possibly the property behind Drew Sloan's there, don't you think that they may wanna jump on board and...
They may very well. That's why we're gonna send out that letter. Give them the opportunity to contact us. Contact us, let us know, show up at the next meeting and say, hey, I want in on this too or no, I don't want in on it. But we're giving each and every one of them the opportunity because all of these houses are in the same situation, but they're not inside that boundary. They're all zoned CG. So, I mean, we... we could bring it back across... we can bring R7 back across and get some of these, but there's a warehouse there. There's the Bell South Building that's there. You know, here's the Eastern Dark Fire Baptist Association or Eastern Baptist George Association. And then, so there... You know, this has always been, you know, historically warehouses, things like that. And we've had this conversation before, you know, back two, three, four months ago that we... we as staff, we're gonna at some point come to you guys and talk to you about possibly rezoning this area to CC. It just happened faster than we thought.
Is that little yellow square up in the top corner there where the CC zoning stops?
You know, up there, David, over here.
Yes?
No, we're on the left-hand side there.
Right here.
Is that where the CC zoning stops?
I'm sorry, that's where the present CC zoning is. And so, we would come down through here like that if nothing changes in that boundary.
Ninth Avenue is where CC zoning stops coming towards Central.
So, you know, Caleb Woodard's workshop is in CC. McDokkey's warehouse at the corner of Nine, it's in CC. But some of this, you know, we can take it. I... I mean, it might... I mean, we could... Over here, we can take it, but it's really extremely non-conforming uses right now. I mean, at some point in the future, if we... I mean, we could rezone anything and it'd still be non-conforming. And so, businesses could close and new businesses could come in and, you know, meet the... meet the conformity of that zoning classification, but there... This guy who restores vehicles, he might technically not meet conformity for the CC zoning, but because he's there, he keeps that condition of use or that non-conforming use. Almost everything else, these guys are gonna do an interior design...
Retail.
Detailing shop and do some architeknight furniture in the back.
Think they've also in the process of buying that little white gas station or possibly some type of coffee shop or some type of sandwich shop or something like that, is what they're wanting to do. And they also have bought two other... are in the process of buying two other properties that will give them some area to have parking and then, I think for both places is what they told me when they were up here talking to me the other day. So, they are looking at owning four different parcels there in that little area.
And the city and the county own one parcel, I think it might be that one, in the boundary and we own this parcel outside of the boundary. So, what do y'all think about this?
It opens it up for a chance of some good development.
I think so and cleaning it up as well.
I'm excited.
I don't say any negative to it whatsoever.
I'm very excited.
You don't see any need what?
I don't say any negative.
Negative.
I hope a lot of people show up to...
But everyone in that area will be contacted is what you're saying.
Yes, ma'am. Where you're gonna send out... Yes, ma'am. Everybody in this area, all of these will be... will be contacted, all of these, every one of these people. All the way down, I'm contacting the church on my list, the church owns that parcel, that parcel, that parcel, that parcel and a parcel across the street. I'm sending them five different letters. So, the guy will know for sure. And it would benefit them just like we just did the Church of Christ to CC. It would... it would benefit them as well to have that CC zoning.
Because they have zero lot lines.
Could change their tax rate?
But this gentleman right here, he did sign the petition. This is the oil change place. He signed the petition. Mr. Martin on C3. So, I know this guy's probably gonna wanna be in it. This guy signed it, you know, but we had to draw a line somewhere. You know, this is the beginning.
David, will this change their property tax?
Don't think so because most of it is already zoned commercial. This guy right here, he's... he's non-conforming. The oil change guy is non-conforming in commercial. It may change his tax a little bit. Church, I think they're tax exempt anyway. You know, and I know that this... I have been told, I have not talked to anybody there, but I have been told that they're very interested in trying to get something, a new church built in.
They've tried several times. Y'all probably remember, we've had different site plans come before us about the church or we've discussed it with you, but for some reason, not sure why, they've never gone forward with their site plans. I think we've talked about three different engineers who have designed something for them over the, well, my almost twenty years here. So, if they were to... were... if they wanted it zoned CG, then it would be beneficial to them because of the zero lot lines. But of course, you know, who knows what they're gonna say, but they will be contacted.
Is everything that's in the CG zoning now allowable in the CC?
No.
Is there any property's gonna be non-conforming in the transfer of that?
Well, like I said, presently, this one is non-conforming. This one would be non-conforming. This one hopefully will become conforming, but at the present time, probably wouldn't be considered conforming. This guy right here who does the car restoration would not be conforming, but the residential would be conforming. The warehousing would be non-conforming, but if, you know, that becomes viable for purchase and torn down and new multi-residential build there, then that would become conforming. The Eastern Dark Fire Baptist Association owns these four parcels.
And there's a lady already going into the Eastern Dark Fire that is selling... She... As she said to me, whenever you come out of my store, you will be able to do anything with vinyl to put on your T-shirts and everything like that. She's Tennessee Vinyl or something like that. So, they have spaces set up in there for businesses to go in there. So, that area or that building is becoming more commercial retail already. So, with it going in there like that, it used to be non-conforming. General retail was not allowed in CG, but several years ago, we went ahead and put general retail into CG.
And you know, so... So, would you... would the commission like for us to move forward?
Do we need that as a motion?
We would appreciate it very much.
It sounds like we need a motion here.
I make a motion that we proceed forward with this conversion of these CG to CC.
Your second?
Second.
All right.
Just wanna clarify, there is a little CS in there and there's a little R7, but we will move forward with this boundary. We will not change this boundary until you guys say change the boundary unless you want us to... If people start coming and want us to add... be added in, do you want us to go ahead and start changing the boundary or is that a decision that you would like to make next month?
If the church wants in and the property along Central, I would think bring it all the way up to Central.
Oh, I would think.
Okay. Okay. Well, we would... We would... If there's a request to add this, we'll add it and any other requests, we will let you know what those requests are and where they're at on a map similar to this and we will let you decide. We've got a day or two that we can... You know, we've got the equipment. We can redraw that, add the parcels into the rezoning ordinance. We can, you know, we can make it happen.
And we could notify you by email if, you know, between the two meetings to what people have requested to be in as well.
Is that gonna include a public hearing at our level?
No. There could be a public input if you wanna allow it at the next meeting. That's what our letter is saying is, you know, we're looking at rezoning this. We're gonna have a planning commission meeting about it. We're not... We never said you're gonna be able to talk, but you know, I would think if, you know, this is sixteen and a half acres as proposed. So, I think that y'all might wanna talk to some people about it.
I would think so, yeah.
You know, and here, both sides, if there's negatives, if there's positives, you know, but everybody... All of those green parcels, we've either signed the petition or we actually knew the people and were able to call them and talk to them and they were like, yeah, I'm all in.
Or someone called us after Rob had contacted.
Are there any more homes that not in that boundary that could be included so if the house burnt down and could be rebuilt, do we need to include everybody that's in that same situation?
We... We could do it that way if they're, you know, if they're interested. The main reason we drew the line like this was the majority of these homeowners were interested at the time. We hadn't reached out. John and Jerry worship on this property and they may very well want to be in. We've just not had the availability to contact.
He was asking about the ones across the street of Cheatham.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Now, if you sit, you know, this, you know, we can take it either way. There's a warehouse here, we can pull R7 over or we could pull CG over. As it is right now, any houses on the west side of Cheatham is non-conforming and would not be allowed to be replaced.
We probably fix this while we're doing it all.
So, do you... Would you want us to add this property? See, this is the Bell South Building. We could add these houses and this warehouse and come down and add these houses that are here on this side of 12th Avenue. Would y'all like for us to... To add that to that boundary?
Would it not be a thing to do at this point?
Yes, we could. It's just a matter of getting...
I mean, why you're into it and doing it?
All I need, we can have Kimberly tomorrow. She can add to the, you know, use the GIS, pull the database off. We can have the letters printed and in the mail by Friday. We'd... I'd already said, I'll just be frank, I'd already set up a database with inside the blue line and outside the blue line. So, we're gonna have to... We would have to add any of these parcels to the west of whatever we changed the boundary to into that outside so we wind up sending substantially more than eighty-one letters, but that's quite all right. We'd be glad to do it. Look forward to it.
And guess what? I don't have to sign all eighty-one letters. He's got the signature on them already.
Take good care of.
I just don't want so much house burned down and they can't build it back.
Oh, I would too. That's just horrible to think of.
Okay, so...
Or they're catching their interest.
Right. So, would you... I'm... From this discussion, we're gonna add the residential housing on the west side of Cheatham down to 12. Okay. So, we...
You might wanna just take it to where the Bell South Building would just get close to.
That's what I'm saying. From the Bell South Building.
Down, yeah.
Down. Keep the Bell South.
Yeah, keep the Bell South.
So, would somebody...
Okay, who... Who made the motion?
I did. Ms. Mason, it's time to just add that to it if that's okay with the one that's seconded.
I don't know where the second came.
Powell, Mr. Powell.
I did.
Okay. We've got that one ironed out then.
So, that will include the west side of Cheatham Street?
That's residential.
It's residential. From the Bell South Building to 12th Avenue. We would... This is the church's property. I think I may be will ask us to add it as well, but we don't wanna presume on their part.
Okay, we're ready to vote then.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yeah.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Okay, well, that wraps up the last item for business. We do have a couple reminders. On August, July the ninth, we are having a board of zoning, a board of zoning that appeals meeting. The first request is gonna be a parking variance. They're looking at selling and out parcel at the Center State Shopping Center, you know, behind Waffle House, behind Burger King, where Belks is at. The present parking requirement is for a shopping center is five point five parking stalls per thousand square feet and they're gonna request a reduction to three... four point three per thousand square feet, which is more in line with a big box single store. You know, Walmart doesn't have to meet the five point five. They meet a smaller number. So, and they're looking at doing a... They're looking at doing a three, potentially three storefronts. potentially three storefronts or at least two storefronts, cutting out that, cutting out a parcel on the front corner right there at the traffic light.
Next one, adjacent to Burger King.
Okay, and then a sign variance, South Haven Baptist Church is asking for that. And, well, first off, are there any concerns? Anything you want us to tell the Board of Zoning Appeals concerning that variance request? The first one, the parking one.
I believe he's listening.
Okay.
I'm all ears.
So, so I would say that no discussion is that there's no real opposition to that variance request, okay? All right, South Haven has a sign variance request coming as well. And Gina is much more versed in that than I am, and so she can tell you a quick rundown of that.
Well, basically, I don't know if you've been, y'all noticed, the South Haven sign has gone kaput. And they are wanting to put up a new sign. Instead of being a big pole sign, they want to be a monument type sign. It still will be, it'll be digital. It will alleviate the need for them having a banner out there all the time about their ongoing program that they run all the time. With a monument sign, you're a little more limited to the size, the maximum size that you can have. So, sixty square feet was for their lot, for a monument sign, is what they were allowed. They want to go to sixty-seven point five, I believe, is what they're wanting. And they will, I don't know if you know where that little triangle is where their sign is? That is the only, that's the parcel there where the sign goes. And there's a, I don't know if it's electrical box or-
Telephone.
Telephone box that's there, you know, as well. So, that's the only thing that sort of is in that little area as is now. And so they will be coming before the board to ask for that variance request for the sign.
When they put the banners up for special events, do they put that at that same spot?
Yeah, they usually attach it to two poles and where it's, you know, you can be seeing it coming as you're coming down the street either way. And I can't remember what the program is that they're ongoing all the time.
Addiction Assistance Program.
Yes. So, that, you know, that's gonna alleviate the need for that. It'll be on, I'm sure it'll be on that digital running all the time and everything else that they need to put on there for their, for their church activities.
So, any other, so we'll move forward with that one as well. Just wanted to remind you that on Friday, it's First Friday. I understand there's an excellent eighties cover band gonna be there, My Kind of Music, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna be there. And also, we'd like to say, we hope you have a happy Fourth of July. And I'm not gonna be here on the fourth or the fifth, but if y'all have any questions or need anything from myself or our trained staff, we'll be glad to get with you next week and answer any questions that you have or any concerns.
We have training after August fourth.
Thank you, I skipped that one altogether. I appreciate it, yes. August first, we have Jane Cotton Coleman, Coleman Cotton, who is a historic preservation specialist with the Tennessee Historic Commission. So, we're gonna set that up for the planning commission and the VCA. We're gonna get some sandwiches, gonna feed you guys, keep you for an hour and then send you home so that we can start meeting the training requirement as-
From the state.
From the state's planning commissioners. We're gonna do better now this year than we did last year. We have a little bit more money, but we also have, we're, we're working on some programs that we can do in-house and give you thirty minutes here and thirty minutes there to get you to your required four hours. So, with that said, do you guys have any questions for us?
I like your scream.
I do too.
Very nice, thank you.
Well, that's, that's part of the new voting system for the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and we just are gracious enough to be able to plug into the backside of it.
You hijacked it.
Like it, like it.
Well, it's nice to have a new Alderman with us tonight.
Mm-hmm. Thank you very much.
We're glad you're here. Is there anything else?
I have one question. On that right turn by the depot, do we have plans to do anything about that?
We, I discussed that with Mr. Ellis. It's very specifically designed to meet the maximum allowable ADA complacency. Not the minimum, but the maximum, because the slope is, and it's maximum slope. So, no. ADA prohibits us moving it in any way.
It seems like we created a problem there with this.
Well, I understand.
You can get a lot of them in a wheelchair sitting there.
Mr. Hollinsworth, you know, the, the design parameters are set forth and we, we design to them the best we can.
Who's gonna police it if you cut the corner?
Somebody that's in a wheelchair and the ramp's too slow, the slope's too-
You can change the slope. You're just changing the point, you're changing the corner to even turn in. But you can't turn in.
When you pull it this way, if you, if you shorten the run, you change the slope, it gets become, it becomes more steep. And eventually, somebody could sue us if they know for sure that it was done. But we don't make those decisions. We just tell you why it was done. Feel free to discuss that topic with your Board of Mayor and Alderman representative and tell them what you want.
God forbid it ever happens, more if you hang somebody on that railroad trying to get run over. Who's liable?
Well, that's why the arms come down sooner.
I know everybody's been by it.
Yeah.
You can't turn in on it. You can't, if a car pulls up next to the depot, gonna go left, you can't turn in. There's no way, you're hung out there in traffic, you're hung out there if somebody makes a move, and then you have a mess.
Yes sir.
I don't understand why we can't cut the corner of it off.
Wouldn't be, it wouldn't be compliant with ADA standards. We might possibly need to look at making that one way from Cheatham to Main. And we'll wrap that up in our minutes and we will, I guess-
Safety committee?
Until we get a new public works director, I'm, I will be the head on that committee. Well, you know, Mr. Ellis is gonna be working part-time for us, but, well, you thought you were rid of him, but we're gonna, but we're gonna, but we will bring that up at the traffic committee, with the traffic committee. When we get the new director.
You know, when they were putting that together, when they were doing that, I could see the potential problem. And I said, well, we'll just see how it plays out, but it's, well, I thought it was gonna be a problem. And do we have, so while they're planning and doing stuff, see something coming like that, do we have to, I guess, go back to the drawing board and tweak something before we actually finish it?
Yes, we, we have that, but in this particular case, the only way we could have changed the ADA complacency and gotten that slope lower is if we had lowered the railroad track. And we already, we paid a large sum of money just to do that crossing. We couldn't afford to lower the railroad track because we would've had to lower it for a half a mile in each direction. So, I mean, that's where you're married to, that elevation. And so, you come out at a twelve to one slope or a maximum thirty percent slope, and it terminates where it terminates. Especially when you're federal, you know, you have federal funds.
I drive a full-size van occasionally, and I don't think about making that right, and the board just can't do it.
We'll bring it up with the planning commission, the traffic committee to see what they think of making that one way, and you can just come off of Cheatham and go to Main. Anything else?
I heard a motion to adjourn. Any others say aye?
Thank you, y'all have a happy-